My time and Mike's time. So it hasn't really come to the forefront again until we had more of a, for want of a better phrase, positive direction from the board. And so now that we have that, we are in fact wanting to have the conversation. The board has not made any decisions at this time. What we have been directed to do is have a discussion with you. As I said in the email, we're not looking for consensus or recommendation. What we're really looking for is to hear your comments. And what I would like to do before we begin the conversation is to have Jeff Muntz, who is county council. Let me just really quickly, Cindy, could you have everyone introduce yourselves? I don't know who many are. Okay, well, we could do that. Let's start with Mitzi.
Hi, I'm Mitzi Olson, I'm the library director for Oak Lodge and Gladstone Libraries.
And I'm Cindy Becker, and I'm the project coordinator for the libraries. Rover.
Unmute, Grover.
You're on mute, Grover. You're still on mute, Grover.
Okay, now I'm not on here. So I'm Grover, and I am a member of the library board, the task force, and the parks board.
Anita.
I'm Anita, I'm also on the DAC, the library board, and the task force.
Great, Kimberly.
I'm Kim, I'm on the task force.
Great, Ellen.
Ellen Roglan, Community Relations Specialist for Clackamas County.
Great, Gary.
Are you talking to me?
I am.
I'm Gary Bukowski, I am a task force member.
Okay, Deborah.
I'm Deborah, and I'm the chair of the library board.
Great.
And I'm all.
Okay, Dominic.
Dominic Portinis, I'm the deputy director at North Clackamas Parks and Rec.
Great, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Muntz, county council, I work with both CPRD and libraries.
Great, Doug.
I'm Doug, I'm on the task force.
Great. And Ron.
Ron Campbell, I'm a member of the task force.
Great, Dave.
Dave Goan, I'm on the North Clackamas DAC.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Mike Boer, NCPRD Director.
Great, Jason.
Jason Varga, Project Manager for the Oak Lodge Gladstone Libraries and Concord Community Center and Park.
Great, Commissioner Savas.
Paul Savas, Clackamas County Commissioner, many hats.
Many hats, right. I had a dream about you, by the way. Nancy Eisenstein. To Nancy Ike, sorry.
Yes, I'm Nancy Ike, I'm the Gladstone Task Force, and I'm a county library board representing Gladstone as an alternate.
Great, Mark Elliott. Mark, you're on mute. You're on mute again. We can't hear you, must be, okay, what happened? All right, Sarah.
Good evening, Sarah Ekman, I'm Assistant Director with Department of Transportation Development, and the libraries are part of our department.
Great, Jess. Jessica.
Sorry, my screen was blocked for the mute, I'm Jessica Stad, the Administrator Specialist for NCPRD.
Great, and Monarch PDX. Is that Chris?
Christie.
Christie.
Chris, Christie. Task force number.
Great, if folks are able to turn on their cameras, it's always much more fun. So if you can do that, that would be great. Okay, and this session is being recorded. So Jeff, we asked county council to work with us to develop the options for the land. As you know, the library actually was always going to be sitting on the Concord property when it was attached, it was sitting on it as well. And the discussion of, okay, what do we do about that, really is what it came to. And Jeff, I don't know if you want to give more background than that.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I entered the picture here. You've had this process that you've gone through and decided to cite the Oak Lodge Library with Concord School on my NCPRD. And so now we talk about how do we accomplish that, so that we have a, have an agreement in whatever form it is that works well for the duration of the useful life of the library. And so the two, you know, obvious solutions to that are either a ground lease or some sort of a sale property to then be used in the library. And the way, and the form that a sale would, could take place has a lot of variations, you know. Going a lot of the really boring details of that, whether you do a lot line adjustment, condo plat, a lot of different options could be available. We just haven't gone all the way down through the process on that. But it's just a threshold question is which, which path should we take? And even if you start off with a lease, it doesn't preclude acquiring a portion of the property down the road. But land typically appreciates, and so the earlier you do that, if that's your choice, that the county commissioners choose to follow, would reduce the overall price perhaps. But it depends upon cash flow to do so. And the same question for a lease, how would it function? And then what do you do with the building if it is a ground lease at the end of that useful life? And how do you calculate the value to make NCPRD whole, as well as, you know, provide the stability in that agreement over the life of the agreement for both NCPRD and the library? So that's the real basics of it, pointing out a few differences, a few issues in the, the brief memo we put together. But cost could be a real factor, time another one, which may, you know, if an acquisition is the preferred method, you certainly could start this process as a lease and then transition, either when the funds are available or start it as a lease, you can simply start earlier in the process.
Would the folks want me to show the document on the screen? Does anyone need me to do that? Kim, yes.
Are you talking about the document you emailed to us?
Yes. Do folks want me to show that, like it is now? Or would you rather just talk to each other? Well, that's, I'm going to show it for a little while. So this is a document that I sent, sent all of you. The, again, the options for consideration, the two that Jeff is talking about is, is the ground lease. And the ground lease can be set for any number of years. I think there was an initial conversation about 25 years. We talked about, since that time, it can certainly be a longer term of at least 50 years. It could be, you know, longer than that, there's nothing, I don't know that there's a magic number of years that the ground lease would be available. There's also, there's been a conversation about NCPRD becoming an independent parks and recreation district, separate from the county. There's been no action taken on that. There has been discussion, actually that discussion was when I first worked at the county many years ago, that discussion happened. So again, there's been no particular movement on it, but it is, you know, it is a potential. So we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And also that any kind of agreement could put restrictions on the use of the library building. For example, if the library building was to no longer be a library building, there could be different conditions put on the lease. The land acquisition, as Jeff talked about, I don't know that we have done the surveying, Mike, to see what exactly the perimeter is of that land or how much land we're talking about. But it would require, it could require a line, lot line adjustment process. And it's obviously going to take longer to do than a lease. The, again, the advantages and disadvantages. The, the lease advantages, it allows us, it allows both the county and CPRD to define the minimal amount of land necessary. And it also is just, it's less costly, and it's also more timely. In terms of the disadvantages, if in the event NCPRD needs to sell Concord property, the library may lose the benefit of shared spaces because there is, there are those shared spaces with the parking in the surrounding area. Or the lease could be terminated, NCPRD or the, or the new owner would purchase, could purchase it. The land sale, the advantages, avoid a potential unplanned sale of the building should the ground lease be terminated. And if the Concord property were partitioned and a parcel sold for the library, it may cost more and take more time, but will allow each party more independence in the future needs. Disadvantages, the process will take longer to implement and may require greater setbacks. And the county has not budgeted to purchase up the parcel for the library. So it would impact the cost to construct the library. Both options will require a conditional use permit through our county planning department. And the details of that would, would be reflected in terms of the final design, size, and location. So I think that the general question here, I'm going to go to this paragraph here. Either of these two can be accommodated, they both have their, you know, pluses and minuses. In short, although the benefit and cost of either choice can be balanced, the differences between the choices require a decision. Is it more important to have the library constructed as soon as possible and attainable cost? Or do the parties require long-term independence to allow flexibility in the future? So Commissioner Savas, would you like to, do you have some comments you'd like to make first before we kick this off?
Yeah. Excuse me there. So I do want to, first of all, thank you for all participating and your interest in this project. I know you all, some of you put, many of you put a lot of hours and, and days and days and years in this, in this project to see this through. So it's truly appreciated, I think we're all on the same side, want to see this project happen, and so on. So I find myself at times having some, you know, within the county, having some longer, deeper institutional memory than most because some of the key people that were part of this were not there. And in my earlier introduction, I told you, you know, man of many hats, and I think I feel like I'm wearing three here tonight. So with that said, I want to, I want to just say that I believe it was the library budget way back that had $300,000 budgeted or set aside or anticipated for the purchase of the property in my memory. And it was also my memory that, that the concept was, for a long time, to purchase the land necessary for the library. In particular, the reason, most especially was, is that there were some concerns about the library, or not the library, but the parks district possibly subsidizing this library project. And we were always clear as the task force, joint, you know, the joint task force, that the cost for the library, you know, the library wouldn't be paying for park costs and the park district wouldn't be paying for library costs. So that line of separation was, was paramount to, to make sure that interested parties on both sides felt that there was, there was fairness, and we were really doing our best, as best as possible, to make sure we abided by that. So I don't know where that's actually, I can't recall exactly where that's embedded for the 300,000, but I just want to just say for those who do, do remember that, I think it's important to make sure that, that we acknowledge that. And a lease was never anticipated, you know, back then. And so I think we got to be mindful that going forward, that we come up with something that, that makes sense for both the county, the library board aspect of a hat, so to speak, because it is, is a function of the county. And also the other hat being NCPRD. So I'll, I'll close there and happy to answer questions along the way if you so desire. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Commissioner. Gary, you got a comment?
Yes. Regardless of whether we're talking about a lease or a land purchase, I am, my attention was drawn to the comment that you referenced, Cindy, where the general comment in this document, you brought up the possibility that NCPRD would become possibly independent. And I don't understand what that is, given, for one thing, the voters created the NCPRD with a measure on the ballot, as I recall, 1990. And given that, I believe, I'm not certain on this, but I thought most of the money put into this was taxpayer money. So how, how could NCPRD go off on their own?
I'm going to take that, Cindy.
Yeah, they're currently, they're currently a county department, so go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so right now, we are a 451 district of Clackamas County. We're the only 451 park district in existence, as far as we, we are aware. We know we're the only one in the state. In 2014, I believe it was, or 2015, there was a, an initiative to separate and become a 266 district, a, a special district like Tuolatin Hills and Mullamalane and others around. And the, and the more standard model of parks and recreation districts. That measure failed. There is talk going on right now of seeing if, if this is the right time, not right now, but sometime in the future, should that be revisited for the district's future operations? So it's not anything new that we're bringing into the discussion, this is just a consideration. Are, really the intent of what Cindy was saying is, and the distilled part of that, that memo is, we'll make sure that there's language in the, in a ground lease that would say, should NCPRD become a 266 separate district, the ground lease would remain in effect. The second part of that was just as important, the other example was, should Oak Lodge become a city and its own government? There would remain protections for, you know, both parties in that instance as well. Because those are both just two possible scenarios that Jeff and Cindy and myself have been trying to kind of forecast of what might be coming, you know, in the future. And, and we want to make sure that there's language protecting both sides, both the county and NCPRD, if that happens.
Well, that didn't answer my question entirely, Mike. Who owns the properties that NCPRD currently?
NCPRD does. We, we own the properties paid for by the taxpayers through our taxpayer levies, specifically Concord. We acquired as part of the land swap between us and the school district for Hoodview. But we own the property, the building that would be, that, that the library would be, would be owned by the county. That's the rub that we're kind of, and what agreement do we have? Do we sell a chunk of the, or does the, does the county buy a chunk of the land that the, that the library is going to sit on, and then they own that outright? Or is there a long-term ground lease that, that we retain the land? The county retains the ownership of the building until that lease comes to an end sometime in the far distant future?
But if NCPRD did become independent, how would they retain ownership, given the fact the, the land was paid for by the taxpayers?
Same taxpayers. So we would be having a vote of the district to say, do we separate from the county and have our own separate board of directors for specific NCPRD business? So the land is, would be transferred, all the assets that, that we had would transfer as part of that separation. We're not moving away from anything, it's just changing the, the governance of it.
And so you would retain a taxing authority as it's independent?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. Um, Anita, comment?
Musiri was before me, maybe?
Musiri?
Yes, Commissioner Savas said there was, there was $300,000 budgeted in. What's the fair market value of the property? Or has that not been determined? Is, is $300,000 fair if we were to pursue that? To me, I'm, I am not a realtor, I don't work in that industry, but I do work in the private sector. I would obviously reject that deal if I was presented with it. Granted, though, this is taxpayer fund, these are taxpayer dollars. But to me, it seems like that is a little bit low, just ballparking it.
Yeah, we have not, we don't have a current appraisal of that property.
In part of that is due to deciding what the footprint should be and how best to follow this land acquisition or lease process. If it's just giving the footprint of the building, it's much smaller than, say, a lot line adjustment, which would also include setback areas and any other land required for, say, separate parking and things like that that might be required through the, you know, planning process. So that's kind of where we're at, these early stages of this decision, and you know, it has, there's a lot of variance there. So as we work through some of the options, then we can refine that.
Anita.
So that makes me think back to how NCPRD didn't buy the land, right? It was a kind of a swap and it was a bargain, is that right? Anyway, what I was going to say initially was that there's a certain simplicity and cleanness in my mind for the library to own the land that it's built on and, and the park and the community center to own the land that, where it lands. And, and if, and if the NCPRD becomes an independent service district under Oregon 266, then the county doesn't have a kind of guarantee, I mean, the library doesn't have a guarantee or a security about continued use of the building somehow. It doesn't, it seems, I'd like to hear people's views on this. It seems too complicated. Doesn't seem as clean as if the library had the library land and the other amenities had their land.
So I will read you an email from Mike Schmier, who is not able to attend. He said, "My only input for the meeting is that it seems unwieldy and unnecessary for the Concord property to be divided up via land acquisition. I, I should think that a satisfactory in capitals, long-term, the longer the better, renewable ground lease could be drawn up that would lay out the responsibilities, financial and otherwise, of the two entities, covering short-term and long-term eventualities." That's why the county has lawyers. Deborah.
Yeah, the, the library doesn't have lawyers. One of the concerns I have about, well, I think that my preference would be that the library owns the land that it sits on, has more control over what goes on. But the 300,000, which was set aside to purchase the land for the library, if, if you go to a higher amount, I'm really concerned that that will take the whole thing. Because if you were at the hearing where the commissioners voted on the going ahead with the library, they seemed very, very concerned that, okay, we have a set amount that we currently have for building the library and that any more money they might balk at, which is very, very concerning to me. And if we do a lease, it should be for like a thousand years. I want that library to be there forever. And there are a lot of really old libraries around, unless the seismic fault in front of it goes.
Thank you, Deborah. Ron?
Well, I have a few questions, if you could bear with me. The first one is fairly simple. What are the setback requirements with the land purchase option? The setback from building requirements for that property line?
We don't know that yet.
Planning hasn't disclosed that?
We haven't asked that question of planning yet.
Okay. Well, my second question is, do the library staff have a preferred approach on this? And if so, what is that and what are the underlying reasons? And then the same question for the Parks District staff. Do you have, does either district have a feeling for how they would like to approach it?
Mitzi, I don't know if you want to talk about that from the library staff? I don't know if you have a preference? Or Sarah, if there's a preference from either one of you?
I want to be careful until I'm a little bit more informed. But of course, if this ends up being a lease, we want to make sure that it's within our budget, our operational budget. But I feel like there's quite a bit for us to discuss here and to, decisions have to be made first.
Well, I think in terms of the lease, the difference in cost with the purchase, there will be a cost established. With a lease, there's a lot of flexibility, including a dollar a year. I mean, we've done those, the county has done that in different places as well. And so the question is, what other conditions or what other costs would be associated? Because there are some shared costs and some other things. So the, I don't want folks to think that a lease has to be at market value. Mike, you want to talk about NCPRD?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not really a preference. I guess I can talk in more detail on, on our thoughts on some of the pros and cons. You know, a purchase, when the building was, was attached to the Concord building, a purchase of the land outright wouldn't have been possible because the buildings were attached. It, and, and it seems like people hadn't figured that, how to, how to solve that back then and, and just kind of kicked it down the road to, to where we're at now. Now that the buildings are separate, it gives the, the option of, of selling that, that parcel with setbacks and, and the requirements for, you know, lot line adjustments and, and whatever options we went with. But I can say from NCPRD land ownership side, I would certainly much prefer to keep the ownership of the land and not have it subdivided into, you know, chunks, especially where the library is currently situated. It would create kind of a U-shaped piece of land, potentially for, for us with the library, kind of on the Spalding side, you know, access, and it, and it would be, you know, more awkward. I'm not afraid of, of the, the options that we've got with ground leases. I, I want to be clear, th- there's no intent for, for the NCPRD staff to take any, you know, do, do anything that, that would be harmful to our relationship with the library. So through all of this, through the full design process, as we're going through all of this, we're, we're talking with each other, and, and there's a lot that has to be figured out on shared costs. I can say the buildings being separated solves some of the earlier complications that we had had about separate meters, you know, and how do you split buildings that sharing the same electrical service? The building's separate now, it's going to have its own address, it's going to have its own utilities. So those will be on the responsibility of the library. Really about the only other shared costs that we anticipate are going to be, A, if the bill, if the, if the library is going to want to utilize any kind of building maintenance or janitorial that we're using for the community center. If it's contained within the library, then that's not an issue. The only other real shared cost is going to be parking lot maintenance and street lights, or, you know, the, the lights that are going to be around the parking lot and pathways and, and stuff like that. You know, but really, those are it, you know, some shoveling, some, some restriping occasionally. I don't see it as being a high additional level of shared cost because the buildings are separated now. You know, I, we won't be worrying about getting our half of the electric bill every month. They'll, they'll be on their own, on their own bill. So, you know, in that instance, a, a ground lease works well. Everybody seems concerned about what happens 50 years or 75 years or whatever it is. I, I don't like putting a time limit on it. What it really is, is, is if there is a time in the future that the county or Oak Lodge as a city at some point decides that they no longer want to have that building be a library, and they want to repurpose it for something else. That's where we would get concerned because it's right in the middle of our land, next to a community center, presumably 50 years from now. And so our concern would be, say, if the county retains Uh, and so our concern would be, say, if the county retains the the land, it's still county property and and the library is is moving to something else uh because they need even more space. And the county says, well, we want to put, uh, I don't know, uh, you know, housing services uh or or a health clinic there. You know, we should be able to have input on what goes into that building if it's outside of the the scope of something that's really complimentary, naturally complimentary to a community center. So it's not a a we have, it it can or can't be this. We just want to be able to have those protections for for three generations in the future. When that comes up, that we're going to have some control still over what happens on the property that we still own, but not to say in seventy-five years or in twenty-five years or any I if I I would love to not have the ground lease have any years on it and just say the language of if at sometime in the future, the the purpose of the of the building changes, the county or whoever owns that or operates that needs to sit down with NCPRD and that we have essentially some sort of a first right of refusal. If we don't want that to go in there, then we can purchase it from whoever owns it or something like that. But that's, you know, in the future. And that's again, only if uh that if the county wants or whoever wants to use it for something other than a library. So I I just don't see that as being a big sticking point. We just want to make sure there's protection for when that happens at some point because ultimately we would still own the land. The county put a lot of money into the investment. That's where uh folks, I think Cindy was even talking, you know, when we draft a lease, it could be a dollar a year. So the the we're not getting any compensation for any of the the land uh use or or any of that. And then at the end of its useful life, whenever the county says it's no longer a library, then we get a better deal on the purchase versus uh, you know, we're charging for at estimated actual costs for shared maintenance stuff. And then fifty years down the road, we're buying it for more because the they've the county has been putting stuff into it. Or any variation, there's that's where what Jeff is saying, there's a a a hundred, I don't know actually a hundred, but there's many different ways that a ground lease could go. Our goal is to just really provide the protection for both the county, the library and NCPRD so that who knows who's going to be making decisions fifty years from now? We want to make sure that there's good language that protects everybody.
Thank you. I just want to one comment. Um, I I have all your hands. I see them. Um, which option lease or purchase would maximize the amount of space set aside for green space and landscaping with native plants? We are concerned about library having huge footprint and paving over more of a very limited green space. I don't, so I don't know.
Probably help with that answer. It's depending on how you adjust a lot lines or do a, like you say, a condominium plat where it's just for the footprint of the building, there may not be a difference at all. Um, but generally, if you're going to have, you know, you acquire the property with more more room around the library, that of course may create a situation where there's less room for the NCPRD uh uses of property. But that's a consideration we're we're looking at all through this process is to make sure that it works for both NCPRD and the library. So and the other complication with this property is that actually four separate tax lots and they're not all zoned the same. So to answer the question about the setbacks, it's complicated because it depends on how we move the lines and which zone we're in and if we need to go through a process there. So and and to Mike's point, just briefly, um, you can put restrictions on the deed to also restrict the uses if there is an acquisition. So it it we can protect that either way.
I'm going to go to some folks who haven't talked yet. Kim?
Yeah, um, I am a realtor. This is this is what I do. Um, and I think that the the I'm just going to say the condo option sounds really interesting to me just because that would allow potentially the um putting in place something like an HOA where each party has a mutual interest. Each party um I would have to agree with each other if they were going to sell or do anything to the property. And also it would control common elements such as parking lots and parks and whatnot. Because um speaking of dividing up the property and creating that U-shaped kind of slice, if the library purchases that lot by itself without ingress or egress, you're talking about easements for the parking lot access. And what if NCPRD sells that land at some point in the future to McMinniman's or something like that? And then the parking lot's used all the time. Like really, my advice here is to think about worst case scenario from both perspectives and decide what's tolerable at that point. But the condo option seems like a reasonable option to me.
Thank you, Kim. Grover?
Yes, thank you. Um, so first of all, I want to kind of set some some clarities. So having been a member of the library board um for the last eight years uh and having the library board then being represented on the task force, um, my understanding is our focus had always been that the the idea to even accept that we would be a resident on the park land. But before that, before it was the Concord land, before that, we'd always talked about that the that the library would have um determination of the land or or ownership or control over the land it sat on. Particularly when you're looking at with the current reality, uh, it's twenty million dollars of taxpayers is what it's going to cost to build that library on that site uh as it sits now. That's approximate number, but still. And it would be owned by the county uh as being a county, being a city of the NCPRD, I mean, it should be the uh the uh Clackamas Parks District. So they are a library city, but that's us as taxpayers. That's all the people who are not staff. I don't know how many of you live where you live, but all the rest of us, we all live within the parameters of this area and we are the taxpayers and it's our twenty million dollars or other taxpayers twenty million dollars that's paying for that. So it's a concern. I'm I'm a big fan of NCPRD succeeding all the way, but NCPRD got a heck of a deal in that trade. Uh, and it got it for way below market value. So when we start talking about market value, it's like, wait a minute. This is taxpayer money pays for NCPRD and it's taxpayer buddy that pays for the library. So I don't quite understand how the market value is a relevant thing here because NCPRD didn't pay market value. So that's piece one. Piece two, the taxpayers are the winners and that's why putting them together was the whole part of what we set out to do was to have the the mutual benefit of having them be co-located. If and when it did get separated and there wasn't a perimeter on the library, it's still going to be park. The library is not going to all of a sudden put up food stands or whatever. It will be parked. The idea of having the library sit in a park, how much of it belongs to NCPRD, how much it belongs to the library needs to be considered. But it clearly it would remain a park. Uh, and then the only last thing is I have multiple documents from the county and NCPRD. Their symbols are on both and their data is on both, that this was designed to be a three hundred thousand dollar purchase. I I have the Oak Lodge Library Concord Community Center from NCPRD in Clackamas dated uh January twentieth, twenty twenty-two and was presented to the NCPRD on March thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, shows that three hundred thousand dollars. Then I have the one for March fifteenth, which also shows that same three hundred thousand. And then I also have the one for uh February sixteenth, also in that same three hundred thousand. So I just want to be clear. This is not a big surprise. It's not a big change. But when I look at if NCPRD leaves, which I'm in favor of having it be a smooth transition, that library and the twenty million dollars that I as a taxpayer helped contribute to and have it sit on land that that the property no longer will belong to it if the lease ended is a concern for me. So I think it's cleanness and I love what Kim said, setting it up so it is a mutually beneficial piece as opposed to one opposed to the other, because the taxpayers are the same taxpayers in both cases. So I think I covered all the points I wanted to cover and thank you very much.
So um I just a a quick um comment about the three hundred thousand. When I was asked to um take over the uh coordinating this project, I I don't know what the three hundred thousand was based on. And so if if somebody else has that information, that'd be great, but I don't know that that we have. There was anything magic about that three hundred thousand dollar number. Just again, it might have been, but I've never seen anything. So um, just kind of FYI.
Well, thank you for that. And I just want to repeat back to that. So we're clear. It isn't based on what, and I don't know what it was based on, that it was published repeatedly on a joint document from Clackamas County and NCPRD. That's the only part I'm using. And I do know there's multiple statements that are in documents that say NCPRD got a heck of a deal and got the property well below uh market value. So that's why I love Kim's suggestion. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, um, Kim.
Yeah, I just forgot to mention that uh it to my knowledge, the condoization process is significantly faster than doing um a lot line confirmation and having to potentially rezone a lot as well. So that's something to consider.
Okay, um, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, so my recollection was is that the during the trade, um, and it was complicated. The car, the county was certainly involved in that and the county, which makes it even more complicated is the county had made contributions to two cities that were in NCPRD at the time um in the millions of dollars. So while that wasn't really calculated in that, um, there was a considerable, I think, vested interest in in the county versus the district. Um, there, but nonetheless, um, the approximate value that was put on the the exchange was such that I think the square, the estimated square footage the library would sit on was divided by that number to come up with that approximate number. I don't think there was anyone saying that that was the hard number, that that was a permanent number or anything else. I don't recall that. There may have been that, but I the part I do recall is I think there was the math done on the square footage. The other thing that we need to be mindful of is that um the uh improvements to the property in order to get permitting to build it for whether it's the Concord Community Center, whether it's the park or whether it's a library, those are those are going to be, you know, those are going to be the responsibility or the cost or the burden is going to be passed on for all of for all those purposes. So so if there's parking required for a library, and certainly there is, um, that the library, the library parking is not being considered in in the in the in the sale as as originally conceived because, you know, it was only really the the square footage of the library at the time or the footprint that it would sit on. So that's where it gets kind of wicked because sidewalk improvements and other appearances and things that require to get county approval or permitting approval are going to are going to be a a burden that should be shared as equitably equally as possible. Um, and I I do appreciate, I think everyone's right. I mean, this is really the taxpayers are virtually, for the most part, one and the same. It has to be fair. Uh, and I think it has to be considered long term. I think Mike's argument, which which is a good one, uh, that, you know, what happens there in the future um is of concern to the district. Just as it is the other way around, where it's also of concern for the library or the county, whoever the owner of the library is, if it is a sale, as of what happens with the district, if the if the district decides to sell the district property for another purpose. So that door essentially swings both ways. So there can be a carefully crafted um uh agreement. Um, and also there can also be in a sale can be a uh and and Mr. Uh, Mr. Muns knows this as well. You can put a um uh some language in there that would say that the land is um to be remain and remain to be uh for library purposes, and that's part of the deed. So there are things you can do and we've done that before. And my concern frankly about building a building, the county has done this before, building a building or owning the property and having a building built on that complicates it in the future, especially when it comes down to the maintenance cost. Because sometimes it is deemed that the owner of the property is responsible for the maintenance cost of the building, especially if there's a a danger or risk, uh, earthquake or whatever it may be. Um, that that that's a burden that has to be clearly identified. And the only way, the best separation is to have the same owner um of the building and the land underneath it. But that's just my opinion and I'll stop there.
Now, I'm um, if if folks are okay, if we go a little bit longer, my fault because we started late, so I I take that on on me. Um, we do, I too much, I'm Commissioner Savas, do you have something else to say for your hand? Okay, um, so we do want to leave a few minutes. Is there anybody um in the public waiting in the wings, Jess?
Hey Cindy, Gary's had his uh hand up for a while.
Okay, I I will definitely get to you, Gary. I just want to know, is there anybody from the public? Jessica?
Um, there is one person currently with their hand raised in the public.
Okay, so we're going to go to Gary first and then we'll go to that person.
Okay, um, in regard to uh what has been said, excuse me, Grover referred to uh the fact that uh NCPRD got a heck of a deal, as I think he phrased it. Um, when we were initially meeting on the task force meetings, in fact, going back to March of, I believe, nine twenty nineteen, uh, we, the task force were being, I'd say, steered pretty strongly to endorse using the Concord property to cite the library. Originally, the task force was to look at multiple sites and we never did because we were steered, in my opinion, to choose the uh Concord site. And amongst the inducements were some comments made, one being by Scott Archer, uh, Mike's predecessor, where uh he stated the district got the property for less than fair market value. And with these savings, he said the district would charge a reduced lease rate for should the Oak Lodge Library go on this site. So I would think that same thinking would go towards the uh purchase of the property as well as a lease, lower lease rate. And that was that was his inducement to get us to vote for putting the uh library on the Concord property.
Thank you, Gary. Um, I'm just, who is the public person?
We have Jan Carruthers.
Okay, Jan?
Thank you.
I will get to you.
I appreciate all of the uh comments that people have been making about this side and that side and taking care. And following up Gary was really helpful because yeah, as I have followed this process all along, especially from the task force, there uh one of the reasons that so many people in the community decided that the library needed to be separated since one of the that, you know, it began to move towards being joined to the building, the old, the school building uh was that there was some misunderstanding or understanding or something about the district maybe not being able to afford, maybe not being financially solvent. And so the community decided that they really did need to be separated, which was the original, as Gary just said, the original plan in the first place. So um I'm feeling the same way is is that even though everybody has great intentions and following Kim's suggestion that you look at the worst case scenario, uh, it would be great for the county to have um the steering control of the library building as each city does have steering control of its own library buildings.
Thank you, Jan. Uh, Deborah?
Um, as a former member of the Parks Board, um, I want to ask, how does this affect the park that's going to be on that land? Is the, I mean, there's there's some language in some of these options about, well, maybe, you know, this won't stay a a library or maybe this won't this or that in the future. What about the park? Is there going to be language in this, any of these agreements that the parks that's going to be created remain a park and not be sold or anything else?
Mike, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I was just trying to figure out how to how to answer that. Um, I mean, really, it it's as Jeff has said, it would really depend on on if the if there was a sale. Um, it would depend on how the land was divided for the sale. Um, if there were increased setback requirements for that building, which meant that it had to be moved further into the property to be farther away from the building, that's going to decrease the size of the park that that is there. Um, any, any, if any footprint increase on, you know, the library footprint uh beyond what it is now is going to shrink the size of of any park land or other landscaping. Doesn't get rid of it. It would just, and again, it it's hard for me to answer specifically because under, say, like the condo option, if it's really just the the land directly under the building and there's no additional setback requirements, it wouldn't have, it would have absolutely no impact on the current plans. It wouldn't have, it would have absolutely no impact on the current plans, and we would have the same sized park and playground and and green space as has been envisioned. But anything beyond that, it would it would change the design. I I want to also, since I I have myself unmuted. To me, one of the biggest cons that has not been talked about as far as a land sale. Is, you know, and Jeff has said, there's ways to get around it by doing a lease first, then a sale. But a sale would delay the project. Because we we would have to have the sale completed before we would be able to start the the get the construction going, I'm assuming. That was, I guess, a big assumption, but I'm assuming we would have to have that all figured out before we could begin construction. And that's supposed to happen, you know, as early as this fall with initial earth moving. A land sale, unless, Kim, I don't know how long condo ones take, I've never. Done one of those, but if it was a traditional land sale, I mean, it could be six, eight months a year, depending on, you know. What happened, you know, and and who was in the midst of the process, so. To me, that's a big con, I don't want to do anything to delay the momentum we've gotten now going on both. The park, the playground, the community center and the library all are coming together, the project is getting ready to 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 be real. So I'll I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Kim also mentioned if a purchase is gonna happen, it should do it while the land is unimproved, because. Even adding systems will dramatically change the value. See, Gwen says, please take measures, keep the park a park. There's someone named Chips who's trying to. Speak, Jessica, I see this.
Yeah, Chips Jangor.
Is he there? There, okay, you want to make a comment, Chips?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I like make a couple of comments, I've been listening. And I'd like to go back to what Commissioner Savas said, because he has institutional memory. As do I, because in around two thousand eighteen, I was on the library board, chair of the library board, when I had conversations. With both. Don Krupp and Scott Archer. They were very solicitous at that time of having the library on the Concord site. In the early days. Both of them, both of them made the point that they've got a great deal in buying this. They bought it at a very good value, and the library, if the library went on there. They could purchase that at a very low value. And Cindy, maybe you haven't seen it, but there's quite a bit of documentation about three hundred thousand dollars, and I think. I'm sure that that I'd be pleased to show you some documentation. I'm sure that other people on the library board would probably also be pleased to show you. There's also another area here that hasn't been talked about. You were talking about, and and I heard Mike talking about. The various alternatives for the county and NCPRD, there's another alternative. That hasn't really been talked about, and that is if there's incorporation, nobody really knows the future of NCPRD. Because if there's a city here, there may be another idea about what kind of parks department we want to have. That's actually. That actually features parks rather than simply recreation. And that's, a lot of people have talked about that, that's an important consideration. Taking that in mind and not knowing really the future of NCPRD, it makes complete sense. For the library to own its own property, that's what was talked about from the very beginning. And at this point right now, to be to change that. That seems to be late in the game, and I'm sure that Jeff can find a way to do that, I mean, obviously, they're very talented. And I don't think it should take all that long, but at this point right now, it seems to be the safest and wisest and smartest. Going forward, we want our own library and we want to own our own library. Thank you.
Jeff, I don't know if you can speak to a timeline around condominium. Kind, you know, condominium minimization.
You know, it's a good question, and really, it's it's generally the same timeline with whatever path we choose, if there's an acquisition, because anytime, once a land use. Permit application is submitted, there's generally a hundred and twenty days. This process could be, you know, we have multiple components, because the conditional use permit as well as, would it be a lot line adjustment on the condominium flat type of an option? You know, it's generally be looking at that and and. There's more process if we go through an acquisition. But I think we could continue the process of working on building a library by doing. A a release at the outset, simply permission to begin, because I don't think. Delaying is not something anybody wants to see happen here, we're looking for the right long term solution and an ability to get started right away.
So it's possible then to do a lease for. A year or two, and then in the meantime, and part of the lease says, you know, that the intent is to kind of minimize. And, you know, if that happens before the end of the lease, then you would just move into the into the other, so there's ways to do that, both.
Definitely, you know, with our work through the Gladstone Library, and we have. You know. That's a land use agreement essentially, so, you know, we've done this other other cases, we certainly have. The ability to do this and and have the right outcome. And the right start date, so yeah, we can do that, it's just, we need to fully investigate the right way to do this. And, you know, depending on how we. Would move the lot lines or do a condo plat, you know, unless there's a. Exclusion zone around the building anyway, it also can be another agreement for NCPRD to use a portion of a setback, things like this, because they're on the same parcel. Depending on what that use is, you know, like exterior, using part of the grass essentially around the building shouldn't be a real problem, so. You know, this is all, we need, the uses control the planning process. But then. The acquisition versus the lease is more about accounting for these. Problems that we foresee could happen way down the road.
Yeah. Grover?
Right, thanks, I just want to make a brief comment, I'm very much in favor of doing nothing that will slow down the process, nothing, I want it to keep going, and Jeff, thank you for mentioning ways that can still keep the same timeline and not have that be an issue. Thank you, Kim, for the same thing, and thank you, Cindy, for the same thing, so. Having it not slow it down, but finding a way to have the equitable is what I want to emphasize as opposed to all the concerns that it's gonna make it stop, I'm done, thanks.
Thanks, so you know, when when Gary and Sarah asked me to take over the project coordination of this. Was a year and a half ago, it was two years ago, I thought, well, this will this will be really fun, you know, building two libraries, OMG. This has just been a wild ride, put it that way. Doug. Comment.
Yeah, I just figured before we wrap up, I should weigh in, and I wouldn't mind hearing what what Mark or Christie have to say, too, they've been, we've all been quietly listening, because there's a lot to take in. But ultimately, I guess my my feeling is, you know, we we've talked about this about a year ago, when we started saying, talking about the library as a separate building. When we first floated that out. I'm feeling a little more comfortable with what many people have said, which was the library owning its property, the land that it sits on. Just because the, you know, the tenuous nature of the future of either organization. Makes me nervous and and having them two dependent on each other. It seems like that could could be difficult. Down the road, so I'm putting my sense into, or my my feelings into say. Like I said, I'm more comfortable with the library owning the lands than than leasing it for in terms of long term. Arrangements. Thank you.
Mark or Chrissy, did you have any comments you wanted to make? Okay.
Chrissy, put hers in the chat.
So, okay, just want the most quick, then Wendy, Mark, no microphone. So just last little project, and then Wendy, flag off. I'm encouraged, the lease option seems seems the safest way. Anyway, I will, I will get copies of all this, copy of the recording, and basically, my job is to. Transmit your feedback to the board, I will send you a copy. Of what I send to them, so it's just, this is really information gathering, as I said, not, I'm not gonna ask for a vote. There, there are lots of variations on this theme. And I think, I think I can say that everybody doesn't, nobody wants to delay the project. And I think that can get agreement from everybody there here on that, so the question is really. How do you, how do you do both things, and it's really, I think that. No matter which way we go, it sounds like an initial lease is going to be important to have, just to get things moving. But it doesn't need to be a long term lease, if the board doesn't want to do that, it can be kind of a, what do they say? Lease to own, is that the, like, for when you're doing that with houses or property, so it could be like a lease to own, you could tell I'm really a real estate person. So there are options out there, and it it sounds like many of you would like the property to be owned. By the library, and. There are some people who say, go ahead and lease, so there's no, there's no magic. You know, answer to this, I think that. What folks really want is to be fair to the county library and the NCPRD. And to figure out a way to do that, and building on what has been said in the past and things that were written in the past. It's really looking at, you know, here's, here's what the what the various stakeholders say, and. And the board, it's a little bit. Interesting, because the board of NCPRD is also the board of the county commissioners. And so it's kind of which hat are they wearing, you know, which time, so that gets a little bit complicated. But, and Ron, I will get to you, I want, I want to know, is there anybody else besides Ron who has any comments to make? Okay, so I will, as I said. Basically summarize what y'all have said tonight. And. Send that to the board, Ron.
I just wanted to quickly add, I mean, I'm also in favor of moving forward as quickly as possible, having the confidence that. That the a fair solution is going to be reached, just given enough time and discussion about this, so I'd say let's get things moving. And work out the details on lease versus ownership later. Not something to be put off by any means, but, you know, I I agree that that we need to get going on on construction of this project, it's been a long time. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, anything you'd like to say? As we close up?
Just just thank you, I appreciate everyone's input, and we'll we'll get this sorted out pretty soon, I I agree that there's a number of ways to to really get this project going. An IGA could be exchanged between the two parties. There's a number of of ways of getting this done, so I'm optimistic that we'll get there, we'll get this project, you know, going without any delay. So Cindy, I appreciate your work and helping to expedite this, and all the other staff as well, Jason, others, and we're all looking forward to getting. Seeing the plans, the final plans, and seeing the permits executed here.
Yeah, that's true, and the only good thing about a fifty year lease for me is that I'll be dead by then, so. Anyway, with that, thank you all for staying and coming tonight. As I said, I will be getting the information to the two folks by next week. And as soon as I get Jessica, who's been great, will send me all this information, and we'll get it done. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody, see you.